Barstown City Council Meeting for February 2010, 7:00 PM is now session. I'll give it forward to Councilman Bob Simpson first.
Mayor, I would like to have a known title for James Tong who passed away. You know, he worked thirty-two years for the city of Bardstown and I would simply go out to the family.
Next thing, I would like to reiterate that this is a meeting for the city council to conduct city business only and not to address issues with the mayor of the councils. And those issues are to be addressed elsewhere at another time. Thank you. We're going to open the floor to receive input from the public. I want to welcome TruP Act 721 and TruP 617 out of Foxville. Do you guys want to stand up and say anything? So do we have badges or anything that you got to do with the reason why you're here? Just looking at?
Um, our trip, we're working on citizenship and immunity and we're worried about like how the, like, this can work tonight.
And my Weibo scouts are here. We are working on our citizenship award and one of the requirements is to attend a council meeting or visit with an elected official. And you guys aren't busy on our meeting night, so we came to you.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Would you mind else would like to have input for the city council as long as it deals with city business?
Yes, my question is what is considered city business? And has municipal order 2013-19 changed from the last council meeting?
I can address the municipal order. There's been no changes.
Okay. Well, then I guess I can say what I need to say this time.
Does it address city business?
I think it does. I asked what the city business and nobody could tell me. Mr. Reynolds, can you tell me what city business is?
In my opinion, it's obvious that it relates to the way the city is run or to any issue before the city that requires the consideration of the council and requires the council to vote in the body.
Okay, so the citizen input, you can no longer come in and say what you need to say? I have an issue that addresses something that was said the last time that we were here.
Well, I don't know what you're going to say, so it's difficult.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and say it.
Let me make a suggestion.
Okay.
If it doesn't relate to city business, I think the mayor has made it clear that he has an open door policy and some things may be better discussed with the mayor at a mutually convenient time at City Hall than here if it's not going to fall under the definition of city business.
It's not going to fall under the definition of city business, but it's not, to use his words, to bash him or anything. It's an item that he said that has not transpired.
No, we're not going to discuss that. No. That does not pertain to city business. City business is about your garbage or electric, water, sewer, anything the city service does for you. That is it. That is it.
But the municipal order, I got this. The municipal order has not changed according to Mr. Bryant. So the last time that we were here on the twenty-seventh of February, then it was okay. And you all went into a private session and then you all came out and you said that nothing has changed. So we were able to say what we thought that we needed to say the last time under and with this order. So now it's being, you know, you're being told what you can and cannot say?
City business.
Okay. Well, I think the city business.
We're going to move on.
Okay, I think the city business.
No, ma'am. We're moving on. Next item on the agenda, does anybody else have anything else to say? Okay, bids and contract proposals and service requests. It's the ADS-S Cable TV Construction Labor Bid. Jeff Mills, would you like to describe the reasons for bidding?
Yes. This is the second phase of the rule of this budget year's fiber expansion in the county area according to, you know, what the criteria we presented in budget time for a number of specified bid, or I mean, build areas. And we opened the bids on February the fourth. The Aircure had compiled all of the particular units. There's probably the list of twenty or so different units that make up construction projects like this, installing strands, installing anchors, the actual installation of the ADS-S fiber itself. That stands for All Dielectric Self-Support, by the way. So we had four bidders respond to this. And Jason Compton, as you know, is the fellow that's also performing sweep services for us. And he was the low bidder at one hundred and fifteen, eight ninety-seven, and seventy-two cents, which we're recommending for a award.
Discussing?
I have a question.
Did you have a question?
Yes.
No. Need a motion.
Need a motion to?
You need a motion to discuss.
I need a motion.
Then a second and then you discuss.
The fourth, a motion to discuss? No?
We're learning. Go ahead.
I'm, I might be the second. I've got a question for a second. A point of exception.
I wasn't around Jeff when you did the budget, so can you give me a little, is this part of our franchise requirement that we expand in certain areas when we are expanding or what exactly is this? Is this for?
This isn't necessarily required by our franchise with the county. These are areas that are financially equivalent or better than what we were building under the old criteria of twenty homes per mile.
Right, right, okay.
So we analyze those costs in twenty-eleven or ten or twelve dollars, excuse me, that thirteen hundred dollars passing was what our current rate structure and take rate of services for support.
It's coming back to me.
So we reestablished that it's a thirteen hundred dollars per passing because of these, this fiber architecture is actually cheaper to construct than the HFC, the traditional coaxial pipe that we've built for years. And also we can construct a major portion of the backbone down the highway and postpone all those side taps for, that normally would build, we'd build within a hundred foot of every house in a build under the coaxial designs. The fiber designs, we can build right down the road, drop eight port taps and let the black tape, I'll only construct the rest. And then to the extent that people, their individual installation exceeds that thirteen hundred dollars total, taking into account that it's already allocated into the project itself, plus their individual portion, they pay the difference.
On the variation of the bids, for the twenty-seven thousand dollar variation from the next, to the next bid, and him being an outstate bidder, has his credibility and work record been checked that the matter's on the concern? It seemed like it's a pretty good gap there for a bid.
Yeah.
Make sure we give what we paid for.
And he's the fellow that's doing our sweep services for us, our line.
He's already in, yeah.
Yeah. He's currently under a three-year contract for sweeps with us at the moment. So we're very comfortable. He helped us rebuild Millstone Hill last year.
Councilman Will, can you remind me what area we're building in?
Yeah, this particular budget will finish this contract. And by the way, we won't probably get to all of this in this bid, in this budget year. So this whole hundred and fifteen, eight ninety-seven wouldn't be expended in this budget. To your point, the next builds that are in the contract and we can accomplish in this budget are Iris Ridge Road, this is all from Old Woodville Road, Hobbs Lane, if you remember the folks that came to visit us at the committee meeting, that little area is built up in the London Farm, yeah, self-divided, divoction out there. A leftover from last year's budget in terms of the ranking, density ranking, Bellow Road, Humphrey Lane, Tom Vittito, Joe Mallett, and then Manton Road, Hutchins Ridge Road. And that's probably all that we can accomplish by the end of the fiscal year. We're probably going to need an amendment. Did I say the right word? Amendment? Finish off the budget here, but we're recommending Mr. Compton's price as it was a great bid. We just got some contracts to help with him, but it's pretty hungry, so we're recommending that.
Councilman Simpson, do you have something?
I have my question. With that being the case, I'll second the motion to approve the capabilities of construction services, ADS-S labor bid for Jason sweep Compton. Well, then I'll make the motion.
That's right. Thank you all.
Discussion? The motion is to approve J.C. Compton bid price at one hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-two cents for the construction of the cable. Is that right?
ADS-S project.
Yeah, cable ADS project. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it? Motion adopted. Next item, item number three, which is HRB, DRB, or planning zoning recommendations. DRB two thousand, correction, DRB two-one-four, that's the County Farm Bureau. Okay, I might ask Barbie to read the description.
DRB two fourteen Nelson County Farm Bureau is a sixty-foot by thirty-two-foot in print sees, one thousand nine hundred and twenty square feet of office building, the northwest corner of New Shepherdsville Road, Kentucky two forty-five, and Patriot Drive. On Tuesday, February third, two thousand and fifteen, the Development Review Board Chairman and Janet Johnston Crowe, the administrator, approved the application and recommended approval of the site, building, landscaping, and lighting plans for DRB two fourteen Nelson County Farm Bureau.
Can I like make a motion? I make a motion to approve, to approve DRB two-one-four Nelson County Farm Bureau. My motion is based on the enclosed copies of the DRB application, design standards reviewed, and site, building, landscaping, and lighting plan. This motion includes any restrictions or conditions that may have been agreed to by the applicant and the joint city-county planning commission of Nelson County. And yield a court for a second. Discussion?
I'd just like to make sure the motion includes these three caveats of four-foot-tall planning, lighting, and outdoor display. I presume your comment regarding their agreement covers that. I assume they do.
Okay, the motion is to approve the DRB two-one-four, the Nelson County Farm Bureau, with the stipulations of the enclosed copies of the DRB application, the design standards reviewed site, the building and landscaping and lighting plans. I assume they're acceptable. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it? Motion's adopted. When, item number four, correspondence. If there's no objections, we will adopt the motion and approve the five K run on ten twenty-four, two thousand and fifteen for Bardstown Middle School with the one-mile walk on February twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen to remember Reagan Carter.
I have a question. Do I need to accuse myself for correspondence A since it applies to Bardstown Middle School teaching run?
I'll be best.
So do I need to leave the room as well?
I'll be best. I'll accuse my, if I could, can we vote on those separately? Because if we do them together, then my recusal would not, I couldn't vote on the other one.
Well, would you have to recuse yourself since there's really not even money involved in this?
I think it would be. You got it.
Okay. We'll do the separate leaks since he has to accuse himself.
Mayor, with that being the case, I'll make the motion to adopt, to approve the letter request for Bardstown Middle School teaching run for the five K on ten twenty-four, two thousand and fifteen.
Councilman Simpson? Discussion? Motion is adopted? Nope, I'm sorry. The motion is, is to approve the five K run. So as Mr., we're still on this one. Motion, motion is to approve the five K run on ten twenty-four, two thousand and fifteen for the Bardstown Middle School. All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it? Five to zero. Now, we asking him about the one-mile walk. If there's no objections, we will adopt the motion to approve the one-mile walk on February twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen to remember Reagan Carter. You know who's concerned? No objections? The motion to approve is adopted. Thank you, guys. Number five, we're going to go to minutes. If there's no objections, we will adopt the motion to approve the minister for one twenty-seven, two thousand and fifteen, and two-three, two thousand and fifteen. Since there's no objection, the motion to approve the minister for one twenty-seven, two thousand and fifteen, and two-three, two thousand and fifteen is adopted. Financial report, number six. Anything?
That was mailed out to you all, and I'll just wait for questions rather than getting up to talk to you about it.
When is it mailed?
The lights.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, light package.
Item number seven, ordinances. We have no ordinances. Under number eight, unfinished business. Number nine, we're talking about new business. I've asked our risk manager, Greg Ashworth, to describe the reasons for these resolutions.
This resolution is simply the city of Bardstown's recommitment to hazard mitigation. The Lincoln Trail area development requires that you have this resolution in place if you were to ever go after FEMA grant money in case of a natural disaster like an ice storm or tornado or flood. So if you ever wanted to apply for FEMA grant money, you have to have this resolution in place.
I guess we've done this every, just every year.
Resolution two thousand and fifteen oh one, resolution to participate in the planning process for the Lincoln Trail Regional Hazard Mitigation and Flood Mitigation two thousand and fifteen Plan Update. Whereas the city of Bardstown recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to people and property with the city, and whereas the city of Bardstown has prepared a multi-hazard and flood mitigation plan hereby known as the Lincoln Trail Regional Hazard Mitigation and Flood Mitigation Plan in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand. And whereas the Lincoln Trail Regional Hazard Mitigation and Flood Mitigation Plan identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property in Bardstown from the impacts of future hazards and disasters. And whereas participation in the planning process by the city of Bardstown demonstrates our commitment to the Hazard and Flood Mitigation Plan in updating data, goals, and actions in the two thousand and fifteen Lincoln Trail Regional Hazard Mitigation and Flood Mitigation Plan Update. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Bardstown, Kentucky, that the local governing body will participate in planning for the two thousand and fifteen Lincoln Trail Regional Hazard Mitigation and Flood Mitigation Plan Update. In regard to Reso two, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Bardstown, Kentucky, that the risk manager is hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of the city of Bardstown, a public entity established under the laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, for all applications and file them in the appropriate state office for the purpose of paying certain federal financial assistance under the Disaster Relief Act, Public Law two eighty-eight, ninety-third Congress, or otherwise available from the President's Disaster Relief Fund, that the city of Bardstown, a public entity established under the laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, hereby authorizes its agent to provide to the state and to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for all matters pertaining to such federal disaster assistance that the assurances and agreements printed on the reverse side hereof.
Councilman Simpson?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve this resolution of two thousand and fifteen dash one and two thousand and fifteen dash two.
All in favor? I'm sorry. Please say it. Yes. Discussion? Motion is to approve Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash zero one and Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash zero two. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it? Thank you. If there's no objection, I would like to adopt the motion to approve and reappoint Larry Tanner to the Bardstown Housing Authority. Since there's no objections, I make, the motion is approved to reappoint Larry Tanner. Is adopted. Thank you. Okay, we're down to number ten, committee reports. A, it'd be the ban meeting that was held on January two thousand, I mean, January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. Minutes were distributed. Mayor, as you remember, our last meeting, I did go over those minutes and those are just in there so that you have a copy of it. B, which will be the cemetery committee management that was scheduled for February the eleventh, and the mayor's conference room, Councilman Simpson, you have the floor?
We're going to meet in more than eight-thirty. Everybody that's on the committee, come on in.
I'm afraid it's up on the strip sheet. She might get there. Yeah.
It's eight-thirty.
Yeah, it's eight-thirty. Trying to get used to the committee members actually taking control of their committees and do that. Eleven, staff reports. Jeff?
I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Chief McCubbin?
Nothing.
Try chief?
I can report now, right now, right?
Mike David?
Nothing, other than what I can say.
Mayor Hamon?
Mayor, we have a gas franchise that needs to be extended. LDMU has asked to extend it. They, we can do it for any number of years and I guess in the coming days we'll talk about it and come back to council with the recommendation. One of the things that is possible is that I think most of the people that have a gas franchise, most towns charge a three percent franchise fee to gals for the maintenance of public bodies. You don't have to take it, but you may take it. I think you can get even more, but I think more than ninety percent of towns take the three percent. So at any rate, that's something for you all to consider. I could give those numbers to you of what it would yield if you're interested, and open or not interested, we can show you the numbers for your consideration as we take it up. There's another project that Nazareth has come working with our fire department about maybe replacing the tank or eliminating the elevated storage tank on the Nazareth grounds and connect to our fire, our sixteen-inch pipe that's out on Wilson Parkway. It's about twenty-five hundred feet from the end of our pipe to get to that tank, which would then float off our million-gallon tank. And that would be at their expense to extend it. And there's a little bit of concern, I guess I have, over the buffer that we signed with the neighbors about the buffer and from the impact of that industrial park to Old Nazareth Road people, the catalog residents, and some along Old Nazareth Road. So anyhow, that's going to be coming. They're interested in improving their fire flow capacity for that campus. So we'll be talking more about that.
Mayor Green, you're hiding, you should be on this side of the room.
Up here a little later. I just wanted to, to the council moment, that we got our big horizontal cardboard baler in today and it was, they installed it and it is, it's working like a charm. It's, we had three or four horizontal, or vertical balers were used for cardboard and It's, uh, we have three or four horizontal, or vertical balers we're using for cardboard, and, and this one baler will, uh, produce more bales than all of those combined, and much shorter, heavier bales, so, uh, and a much shorter amount of time, and easier on the, on the, uh, workers out at the gutsy opportunity center, easier to operate, and it's gonna be a real, you know, benefit for the recycling program, and, uh, so our next challenge is to, is going to be, now that we have the capacity to, to, uh, process all this cardboard, will be to, to go out into the, uh, particularly the commercial community and to try to collect more cardboard, and so we'll be maybe looking to, uh, talk to the council about whether or not we, we wanna, uh, address that, uh, with rates, or whether we just want to, um, just pick it up. But, we need to be addressing that soon, because we now have the capacity to do a lot more for the gutsy opportunity center.
Yeah, and to, to be able to recycle, if we could push more, increase more downtown businesses and mine to recycle, that would really benefits the, uh, we, they really helps out a lot in that, uh, in what we're trying to do and what they're trying to do up here. I think it's a good idea.
Um, in regard to the resolution, I will need each one of the council's signature before you leave, so I'm just gonna shoot you before you leave.
Resolution on what?
The resolution in regard to the, uh, risk manager being the agent.
And the next item will be the cemetery deeds, uh, the, the city fire catch has requested two graves, uh, additional, so if there's no objections, uh, I'd like to adopt a motion to approve the cemetery deeds with both Debbie and Harold, Steve, and Joyce, and Donnie Adams. Since there's no objections, uh, the motion is approved, cemetery deeds for Debbie, Harold, Steve, and Joyce, and Donnie Adams is adopted. Thank you. And we got staff anniversaries, five-year anniversaries. Uh, got Justin Miles of Public Works, five years, Nick Marksberry of Electric Department, five years, and Chuck Canafi, which Pub Works, is ten years.
Ten plus.
Yeah.
How many you have, bro?
Enough.
Twenty and seven, Steve.
Yeah, so he's, he's in the long haul. Number, uh, does the council have anything to add?
I'd like to make a comment, I'd like to make, uh, city attorney, so you have time to discuss point thirteen, nineteen, minute, all of them.
Yes, sir.
You just call me, that we don't like to pre any time.
We'll set it up before we leave tonight, if that's okay with you.
Okay. Like?
Sure.
Um, the Human Rights Commission met Tuesday, and, um, in presence was the mayor and Mary Green, and, um, they have brought up the, um, ordinance that needs to be updated, and after some research and things of that nature, I think that the mayor, you're gonna work on that and bring that before us.
Larry Green and I are looking at it, uh, and working on it, and we have to go through it line by line and make sure things are in order.
Is that something that's updated periodically, for sure?
Well, it hasn't been updated since nineteen eighty-six.
There, there needs to be some new coverage presented.
Is this for the joint ordinance?
Yeah.
Is it?
Well, okay.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
It is that one, yes.
Anything else, Mr. Simpson, here you go. Problem? Okay, if there's no objection, I will adopt the motion to adjourn.
So what?
Since, since there's no objection, the motion is adopted, and we are adjourned.
Can't stand by two?
Oh, great.
Thank you.